Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:35. We'll go ahead and adjust the agenda. Does anybody have any agenda adjustments? We'll go here, citizens first. So, okay, Sandra, go for it.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to say I know I'm being on the Planning Commission and the Select Board, putting together a proposal like this takes so much time and effort. I mean, I appreciate what you guys went through, so, so, thank you.
Thank you. We do have an opening.
That's okay. I do like, you know, just when I first read this, I knew all these items on this first page, you know, I think they're very important, and I think you kind of nailed them all. But then when I went to your meeting, and I also read this, thank you for the bigger print, I came away from that meeting thinking that we, you know, from what Diane said, we have certain things maybe in place already that maybe aren't enforced, that maybe could address some of these items. And I see from your notes that Shannon brought some things up about driveways, that people brought some things up. Because this 26 pages of to-dos is a lot, you know, just a lot for people to look at and say, oh, I'm going to buy into this. So, just my opinion, and I don't even know much about this, is that if we have things already going on in the, in the town that we could do that may address some of these things, that could be enforced, maybe we should look there first. We have Act 250 that may encompass some of this stuff. I'm not sure about anything. I'm just saying, there's this whole bunch of stuff that appear to be over here, but let's look at that, see what it will do. Maybe cross off some of this stuff. Because I really think, you know, just my opinion, that's, that this is a lot when you look at all the to-dos in here. And I know Jason, like, you know, I don't know if you're planning to help out with this, but that's another stop point. So now you go from, you know, the Planning Commission to the Select Board, to Jason, and I know you're very busy, you know, when you're, you're the go-to guy for everything. I just think it's a lot for people to kind of take in and want to do. And there was other suggestions here that Rick did. I mean, this was a very good meeting we had last month. I wish I was here. But about larger projects and, and Bruce, you came in with some other comments, which, which is good, that maybe you should look at ahead of time. And maybe, I don't know if this could be slimmed down, because this is going to be a hard sell, I think.
Yes, it will.
You know, and, and in like Dick and Jane, I mean, this is like, I mean, I went through this, not that I read every step. It says, you know, my eyes were glazing over with some of this, how many times you have to go back and forth. I mean, I don't have any land in this, but it could be difficult for people to do. So, that's what I've got to say. I know how hard it is to do these things, but I just think it has to be, you know, I know when you were doing your presentation, and you kept saying it was simple, simple, and I'm looking at all this, it's like, I don't know how simple that is, you know, what people have to do. So, I appreciate your comments from last week, and I'm glad I read this before I came here. But that's all I have to say, you know, I just don't think it's going to sell this way.
Okay, well, we're going to be discussing it tonight, any changes, things like that. So if you want, welcome to stick around for that. Okay, Gabe, did you have anything?
I just appreciate all your work.
Okay. Why don't we go to approving the meeting minutes from May? Give people a chance to read them.
We have four?
We do, yeah, four. Yeah, Shirley is, she's there somewhere. We should probably wait for her. Okay, Shirley, we're approving the meeting minutes.
She's needed.
I'm sorry, I had to put my dog outside. He was barking too much.
Oh, no problem. No, we just started Agenda Number Three, review the, approve the meeting minutes from May.
Okay.
So, we're just in the process of that. So whenever anybody's ready to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Go ahead.
Bye.
Okay, motion is passed. All righty, we'll go to Item Five, Montesquik Regional Commission Staff. Jason Rasmussen is here to discuss our draft subdivision regulations. I think we're discussing, I know at the last meeting, and I think what Sandra brought up, possibly slimming them down, is that?
I think it's possible, you know, it'd take a little bit of work, but yeah, I think they could be slimmed down. Yeah, I was hoping to just kind of go through some of the things I heard during the public meeting and see what you wanted to do about it.
Yep.
Figure out a game plan, a next steps. One of the comments I heard was, what's it going to cost? You know, and I don't have a number necessarily. I think each project's different, but I would imagine hiring a surveyor is going to be something in the neighborhood of a couple thousand bucks. Tim, I think you know better than I do.
Probably not, yeah, yeah.
So I think, you know, people may want to know that when we go to present this around the next time. Let's see.
Okay, just on the surveyor aspect, I guess when you buy a lot, I mean, if you're getting a mortgage, doesn't the bank require you to have a survey generally?
Not always.
Not always?
No.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to own a piece of property that didn't have a survey done on it. Is something that I consider to be the, the cost of ownership, got to have a survey. You have to know where, you have to know what you have.
Right. Yeah, and it's not always clear where your lot lines are. So when you're about to build a house, you want to make sure you're not putting it in the wrong spot. So, I mean, I think it's money well spent, and, you know, I mean, people can disagree with me, but I think the average cost to building, the average home is like half, like, excuse me, like, yeah, half a million dollars. And so, you know, yeah, it adds to the cost, and that's not great, but it's really pennies to really the grand scheme of things. So, you know, I think it's, even if you weren't subdividing, I still think it's a good idea to have a surveyor or a design professional of some sort helping you out anyway. This would require a surveyor to subdivide. So, I think, you know, folks just wanted to know what the cost implications of that are. If you had a really, really large lot, it's going to be more expensive, but this would allow inter-wave, like a full perimeter survey and some of those, some of those things when, when that comes up.
Sure.
I'm just going to go through, but you're all certainly welcome to chime in.
Sure.
I heard a comment about the landscaping and screening standards on page nine. Whether that was just a little too much, I don't know. Do you folks want to revisit that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. It looks like a landscape architect wrote that.
So I don't know, you know, is your sense, you want to just dumb it down, or are we talking eliminating? Do you have a preference for how to handle that?
I think we can eliminate it. Because if it's like a big, big, big subdivision, you know, 30-lot subdivision, we can address it.
That would involve an Act 250, and they'd address it.
That's right.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, let's just scratch that.
Okay. And again, please stop if you have other things. On page 11, I had a note about, this is the protection of historic and cultural resources. I had a note basically clarify, is there a practical approach to this stuff? I actually don't remember the detail of the conversation.
Is that the stone wall one?
I think it is, yes.
Yeah, so that was the objection I brought up.
And so, again, just what do you folks want to do about that, if anything?
I like historical features preserved. That doesn't mean you can't put a hole in a wall to extend a driveway. You just take the stones that you removed from that spot and put them to the right and the left of the wall. And that's it.
Yeah, and I think practically speaking, you can maybe, maybe you can break into the stone wall to have your driveway pass through, but then you're maintaining the stone wall.
The remaining wall.
The remaining wall, and things like that. And I, and I think that's implicit in this, but maybe it's not super clear to folks, so if there's a way to...
We could say historic features included stone walls and cellar holes should be preserved and integrated in the subdivision design.
And layout. And it says to the extent practicable, which to me means...
That's what I was looking for. That's, that language is fine.
To me, that works, but may not be clear to the average citizen.
Go ahead, Gabe.
So, the preserved piece is, since that's the command, is it should be preserved to the extent practical, that means preservation is, is the goal. If you change that to be considered, or, you know, or modified as, as least as minimally as possible, or, or, you know, as, you know, for the practical piece, but with that preserved being the driving statement, then it seems like you have to preserve it.
So, in the legal language, you know, we are saying should, which is, lawyers would tell you that's kind of wishy-washy. It's really more of a guideline when we say should as opposed to shall or must. And then we're also saying to the extent practicable. I hear his point, and maybe we could change it, but again, to me, just understanding how the, the courts look at this language, it's kind of weak to begin with, but I think to the average person, it may not be. We could certainly change preserve to protected or, or maintained to the greatest extent possible, or something that may be a little clearer to, to folks.
Yeah, that, that might be better.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jason, is this a boilerplate coming out of regional planning, which every town in Vermont uses?
Not exactly. It is boilerplate in the sense that early on, a number of months ago, we talked about, you know, are there other towns that have a good subdivision language? And it's Weathersfield, and so basically the decision was made to start with Weathersfield's language and then modify it. So it's not, it's been changed, but it is basically, the framework is from Weathersfield.
Yeah. Now, does Weathersfield have zoning, or they?
They have zoning.
You could also say that the historic features can be modified with approval. And then, and then that gives a chance to have some sort of conversation. I think.
See, right now, we have nothing unless it's an Act 250 project.
Well, I was, I was thinking that the, the building or, or the permit for, for subdivision that you'd have to get under this, if, if part of that could be a...
Should we have like two separate things for like smaller subdivisions, like somebody has a lot, you just want to break off one to the bigger ones? Because this, this is, this is not applying to, like, somebody just having a plot and want to break out, you know, the subdivision. And how much does Act 250 will come into play under, under all these things, you know? There are certain things that say, no, Act 250 will take care of this, but, you know, I just think this is a lot. But, you know, I defer to you guys.
Yeah, with Act 250, I think it's like over five or more lots would require a permit.
So this is anything under that?
Yes, it is.
Yep. Man, over. I mean, it would still...
Yeah, they'd have to vote if it was under the Act.
I mean, Act 250, they would look at our regulations, if we have them, to make their decision. I mean, if we, if we didn't have the regulations, then they would just use their own guidelines.
Yeah, it's actually better for the landlords of town to have subdivision regulations than it is to turn it all over to just governmental commission. It's, it's better for everyone that, that lives here.
I would agree.
How is this working for Weathersfield?
Well, you know, there's, there's a difference between the language and how it's administered.
Oh, I know.
Let me just put it that way. So I think it's, it's a mixed bag, to be honest with you. I think it can take too long sometimes to get through the process, in my opinion. But I think that's how you administer. And I did also just want to point out that we did include a minor subdivision process here. So if it's four last lots, it's what we call an administrative review. It doesn't have to go to the full board. So it should be quicker, should be a little easier.
But it still has to meet all these.
It does, and that, that's something we should talk about. Maybe dumb that down, you know, make it a lot more simple in terms of...
Can there be two categories?
Maybe, yeah.
Would that, you'd have rules for, say, like a four lot, three, two to four lot subdivision? And then different, or the same, but more for?
Possibly, yeah.
But then you're getting, it's going to be a longer document, right?
Possibly, you know, it, I'd have to think a little bit more about how we do that, but we, potentially, there could be just a little table, and it says, these are the standards that apply to the big ones, and these are the fewer standards that apply to the little ones, and, you know, something like that. So I, it might not necessarily be a lot more information or pages.
Okay.
But also, sorry, go ahead.
I would say if you do that, I would request to the, the survey piece, maybe on the smaller pieces, not have to, have to go through that. Because I could imagine separating my land, and I would, you know, separate it with, you know, with markers, and, and, okay, this is, you know, you know, the kiddo would get this piece, and this kiddo would get this piece, and this kiddo would get this piece, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't survey it, it would just be an agreed, here's the line. I might even build this new stone wall to be a historic feature in 100 years.
But you're, you're subdividing per se to each one of the kids?
Yeah.
They're going to have separate deeds?
Eventually. Maybe, I don't know.
It's risky.
It is. Oh, yeah. I, I don't know, it's a possibility. I'm not, I'm not making any imminent plans on it, to be honest.
So we're, we're discussing number of lots to the, and equating it to size. But Ms. Deveraux brought up a good point with, let's say someone has 100 acres, and they're going to subdivide into 20-acre parcels, as opposed to somebody who has one acre or two acres, and they want to divide by a third of an acre into subdivision lots. I think that's where we're getting into, why would, how is that equal into, well, it's the number of lots, but it's not a big, large-scale subdivision kind of thing to where if someone has a whole bunch of land that they're getting rid of, or wanting to parcel off into 20-acre parcels per se, I think that's where we get into some gray area with, you know, just putting it in the, in the scope of number of parcels as opposed to the size of how big of these parcels are being subdivided into.
Right, you're obviously not going to do the same thing on a third of an acre that you're going to do on 20 acres. Or, oh, you might, but you might not.
I know of a situation that's ongoing now, in which a family's owned a piece of property since 1947, and it had an old house on it, size of an acreage, it's like 270 acres. This is in, in Chester, but the, the old folks have died off. And in the last 30 years, one of the daughters took a, took a garage and did extensive work on it, and it's, and it's actually beautiful. Well, there was no subdivision, there's no lot lines, and now it's all involved land, and they're in, they're, they're in trouble with combined septics, they're in trouble with combined wells. They're, they, they happen to be feuding, which is unfortunate, because it could have, if everyone was of agreement, you could have worked it out. But when you say, well, this is my land, and, you know, my, my daughter wants to live here, and she wants to become a nurse, and she wants to put a house over there, there better be a subdivision. It, it becomes all involved land, and there will be problems down the road.
Oh, yeah.
There, there always will be.
So what about the, I mean, there's, I can't think of a, I can't think of a town that has, you know, minor, major subdivision that includes the, the size of the lots. But I know some towns have, you know, if it's a subdivision with a really big lot, you got to do some extra things. You know, is there any interest in, in getting to something like Miguel's talking about?
That was the feedback that we had heard from the public, was, you know, how is it that, you know, I want to just divide this up for my family, and I have this much land that I want to give to my kids, as opposed to someone who's wanting to, you know, commercialize for residential, multiple residential units for profit aspect. It doesn't, it doesn't correlate between the two.
Well, it's harder sometimes to differentiate between, you know, one of the, what's the intent of the developer, you know, like, is it just for the kids, or is it commercial?
Well, that gets into a tricky...
It's a little bit of a slippery slope, like I was saying, but I hear the point, but I'm not sure what everyone else thinks about that.
Right, but we have like provisions that if you're subdividing it for your family, I mean, that's kind of a slippery slope, because you could, you know, it'd still be a business venture. They could just sell it after it's subdivided.
I just think that's going to be a good big point of contention, trying to get this approved.
If you're spinning off a lot, so either to sell or, or keep for a family member, and it's, if it's on that larger piece of property, it should be subdivided, and it should be surveyed, with the survey recorded here in the office. It's, it, you're just, you're walking around with a, with a loaded piece of dynamite without that.
Now, could that impact the town with, you know, lots that aren't surveyed, and you have exactly what you were talking about?
Well, you can't force somebody to survey the lot that they presently own.
Right.
But on the other hand, if they say, well, you know, we want to spin this, this corner section over to my, my daughter and son-in-law and kids, because they want to build a vacation home on it. You know, you need to know your boundaries.
I agree.
And, you know, Jason said, a survey is about, typically runs about $2,000. I've had a number of them done. But you sleep real good at night.
Yep.
When you know, when you know exactly what you own, and your neighbor, who hopefully you get along with, isn't going to try an encroachment. My son Scott has a farm down in Shaftesbury, and when the survey was done on a piece of property that he bought to join the farm, found out that the neighbor that lives quite a distance away, 12 feet of his garage is on his property. So, they didn't want to cause a huge problem. They did a boundary adjustment, but, you know, my son didn't have to. He, he would have been, in his right to say, take 12 feet off of that.
Yeah, and there are some lots out there, other places where you can't, if there's just not enough land to work with. But, you know, for my two cents, I mean, I, I would, if I were dividing the land for my kids, I want some professionals to help me out, to make sure that it's subdivided properly, that perks, that, you know, the building site's going to work, and it's not going to be overly problematic, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, again, I guess I'm thinking of it like a, it's not a huge, you know, if you're spending $2,000 for survey, you know, 500 bucks, $1,000 for wastewater permits, you know, I think it's money well spent personally. But I hear the point, folks don't want to, they don't want to make it overly expensive, but I still, I still think it's money well spent, like Bruce is saying.
Right. It just protects your property, because you don't know, that, that property could sell someday. Your kid could decide to move, and then, how they're going to sell their land if it's not surveyed?
Three things happen when somebody surveys, or has a survey done on a very rural piece of property. They discover they own more land than they thought. They discover they own less land than they thought. And every once in a while, it actually comes out that the, the boundaries, which may go back to the 1790s, are spot on. That actually happens a lot, but...
Yeah, that's been my experience. But again, I'm bounded by stone walls on every side.
But you know, you know, those stone walls were built after the, after the, after the lines were laid. So it's not unusual to find, everyone says, well, the wall is the dividing line between this parcel and that parcel. But when the survey is done, you might find that it's actually five feet on one side or the other. Then, you know, reasonable people say, look, the wall is a natural boundary. Let's, let's leave it at that, instead of worrying about what's on the other side of the wall is actually mine. Oftentimes, the, the wall transverses the original property line. So each one has a little more, a little less than they thought. But sometimes, there's real surprises when a survey is done. Maybe that's why people don't want to have a survey. They want to think what they have is theirs.
On Lake Rescue, there's a lot of really small lots in this one area, and, you know, there used to be camps on them, and then they built these big houses. And there's, there's like, it's a mess, because there's like a well is on someone else's property, the septic encroaches, everybody encroaches on one another, and they can't sue one another, because they're all, it's all messed up, so they just live with it. So...
Well, yeah, they can live with it until they go to try to sell it.
Yeah.
Then the inspections are done.
Right.
And then the, then the arguments start.
Right.
So back to the survey question and the large lot stuff. Are, are we leaving that alone for now?
Yeah, we'll leave it alone.
Yeah, I think so. How does everybody feel?
You can always revisit it down the road if we decide to.
Right.
This, it's interesting that we're talking about this, because we tried to do subdivision regulations in the mid-1980s. This was the hangup then.
Yeah, was that the hangup?
Yeah, I remember a couple people said, well, if I had a piece of property, and I wanted to leave a corner of it to, to my children, I want to be able to do that. And I'm thinking, okay, that's good in theory, but you don't have enough land to do that
Yeah. Okay, so the next thing I had was on page 12, under the utilities and water supply, and that section five, or 350, under B, it was talking about, shall require underground utilities?
Yeah.
I had a note, is that too much?
Yes, yes, it is. That's a, that's a, that's a big goal, people that, that move into town from, like, somewhere where the soil is sand.
Yeah. It sounds good to get a big ledge, right?
Yeah, I agree. That's definitely... I mean, on these big subdivisions, they're going to be, it's going to be underground power anyway, most likely.
Probably.
Yeah, because it...
Oh, yeah, you're right, almost always.
Yeah.
I actually think that was the last note that I had. Are there other changes that you folks want to see made to this? Like, you know, I hear that we want to slim it down, so that may mean some other things. There's a section here about archaeological stuff, and, you know, what stays and what goes, I guess, is my question.
We should leave the archaeological stuff alone. I mean, don't, don't fret about it.
Oh, don't change it, just leave it?
No, change, get it out of there.
Get it out, yeah, I agree.
You know, so some of those extra kind of standards, maybe?
Yeah, and I think even like, I mean, I like all, like, you know, like, on F, road shall be designed and laid out to the extent feasible.
You know, avoid adverse impact.
Avoid adverse impacts. I mean, it's all good design.
Yep.
You know, maximize connectivity within the subdivision and to adjoining parcels or trail networks. Well, I'm on 13.
Oh, so.
Yeah.
But the, the section 360, 1, 2, 3, and 4, stormwater management and erosion control.
Yep.
It's very important.
Yes.
Very important.
I agree with that, yeah, I agree.
I almost, yeah, I think if, if we're trying to slim things down, like F, we could maybe eliminate that because, well, or that have that part of the, the major subdivision application, but not have it if you're just.
Yep.
Yeah.
We could do that. You know, one, one thing I, we could probably do is just kind of, after this, go through and sort of pick out the, the stuff that really should apply to only the bigger stuff and maybe try to itemize that out in terms of what applies to the minor and, so I think that's a good point.
Yeah. Even like going on, my page 14, maybe yours 13. You know, a lot of this, like seven, traffic and road capacity, that could be just for a major subdivision.
Yes.
Right, all this, well drainage and stormwater, that's all very important. We should keep that.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if even, like it talks about access permits, which is fine, I think, but then it goes on to talk about access management and that might just be extra. I don't know if we really need that.
Yeah, because if you look down on page 16 on your pedestrian access, unless specifically waived by the planning commission, curbs and sidewalks shall be required along internal streets of all subdivisions.
Yeah.
That's not going to be anything that, you know, two people, you know.
No.
Two lots are going to do, plus we don't even have sidewalks in our own town, so.
Right.
Kind of hard to enforce that.
So the whole.
Well, sidewalks to no.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't see a huge subdivision happening maybe in the village where we would need sidewalks. I mean, I don't see a big subdivision needing sidewalks if it's.
No, no.
Where are you putting it? It's going to the school, there's, it doesn't exist.
I mean, the only thing I could think about is if, if by some chance there would be a subdivision on the edge of the village and, you know, maybe they are required to build a sidewalk to connect to the existing sidewalk.
Which doesn't exist, so.
I mean, there are a few, but yeah, I hear you.
It doesn't go to the edges.
Doesn't go to the edge of the village at all.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe it doesn't, maybe it can go away.
There's a sidewalk on the, on the church side of, of 131 on Main Street. You go to my brick house, take a, you know, something, something sharp.
A snowblow.
No, no, I mean, there's, there's a concrete sidewalk under the, under all of that sod that's kind of just filled in there. It was, it's there. Craig Woodell told me that. He said, we used to walk on a sidewalk and now it's gone. Well, it's overgrown.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I've seen it when a snowblow scraped.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of that too, like if there was like a big subdivision in the village or outside the village, the town could require that they just build sidewalks if it's a big subdivision.
Is that an act 250?
That would be act 250.
Not necessarily, no.
Nope, but the town could say, look, if you're doing a 30 lot subdivision next adjacent to the village, you need to build a sidewalk into, I mean, that's pretty common.
So what do you think about the dedication of open space? I mean, it's good, it sounds good, but how often does it come up? Is this something that maybe, you know, we're thinking of keeping things simple, so maybe this first draft gets through the process, whatever. Is this kind of extra and could it go away for this round?
I definitely think it's extra.
Yeah.
Which one, Jason?
I'm on, this is my page 17, section 380.
However, that, this could be the present, all this stuff could be put into our town plan. So when it does these, if it is a big subdivision.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Sidewalks could be too.
Yeah.
It's going to be something in a big subdivision. It's not going to be someone splitting a five acre lot in half.
No.
You know?
Yeah.
The open space and the common land would be something similar to the Black River Commons where they got that wide open space there in front of those houses.
Yeah, it'd be similar to that, but, you know, these probably don't come up except for like, you know, like the castle kind of, you know, building the condos or something big, you know, that's usually where this comes into play.
Right, which our act 2, or our town plan could really get some more teeth to address that.
Potentially, yeah.
All right, so that's going.
Anything else that folks think should go?
Wow, I think that's the end.
Yeah, that's the end of the standards. There may be some other things in there though that are.
You're supposed to have a building permit in order to start construction of any, anything in town. A lot of times we don't. They just, you realize something's going on when you see the excavator or the concrete trucks there. Because it's out there that you can do anything you want in Cavendish because they don't have zoning regulations and they don't have, they don't have subdivision regulations. People tell you that. I want, I want Cavendish because there's not a lot of hoopshat to jump through. And maybe that's how the people want it, but as more and more of the backroads parcels get sold, development occurs, there'll, there'll be chickens that'll be coming home to roost. Healed Road is the best example of that right now.
Okay, I see something on my page 18, like the performance guarantee.
Yep.
I mean, I think that could, that would really scare a lot of people if they're just doing a four lot subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so is that just applied to major stuff as needed or should, are you saying that should just go?
Well, maybe, I guess if it's a major one.
That would, act 250.
Act 250.
Just the environmental commission will take, take control.
Could we put that in our town plan maybe?
Okay.
Yep.
Because that doesn't impact, you know, someone, a family trying to subdivide land with town plan, they don't have to even look at it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, 98% of the time, this doesn't come up anyway.
That's right.
Just the, yeah.
On page 12, section 350.2, street lighting. Is that necessary?
No, it's not necessary.
We have 12 streetlights.
That could go in the town plan as well for a big subdivision.
Because it's, I mean, it's down to like, talking about brightness and Kelvins and it just seems a bit much.
Yeah.
Yep.
But they do know, the science though of lighting, they know so much more now, like how it impacts the birds and people and all that. I mean, so, I mean, they are finding out, but to put, put it for a minor subdivision is a little much. I agree.
Is that, is that covered in act 250?
Yes, lighting is, yes. But if we have it in our town plan, they look at our standards and they're like, okay, this is what we have to say.
We agree with that.
Yes, or, you know, they, if we, if our town plan is really detailed, I mean, they, I think they tend to look at it closely. They're supposed to, rather than just make up their own minds. And, and again, it doesn't like impact, you know, a small subdivision under five lots, five lots or more.
As far as municipal water goes, Sharon, Shannon, are you aware of, of our well capacity diminishing? Has that been brought up at any meetings that were, by Rick, that were not running out of water, but it's time to watch it?
No, not yet. Because we did come up that at one point that was an issue, but it's not currently.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I heard, that's why I was asking you.
I have a question. When you get into page 19, you know, the administration and enforcement, it's like, that was my, when I went through here, all the things that people have to do and the papers go from this place to that place to get approved. Who's going to do all that? Because I remember at the meeting, Diane even said, certain things they have in place now, they're not, they don't have somebody there to enforce them. So who's going to handle all of this? I don't know if it's gotten that far.
Because administrator. Town manager would, in most cases, until they appoint a part-time administrator, if that's what they want to do, the select board would decide that. Somebody who worked 15 hours a week like, like they do in Chester. Just comes in two days a week and reviews proposals and just things that have to do with the, with the subdivision or the development.
I don't believe the select board's talked about it, but I could be wrong. There's some very preliminary conversations were had about, well, maybe, you know, my office could do that on it as needed. You know, because probably this is a very, you know, you're going to have a, one application trickling in, you know, very occasionally. So it's possible that we could explore that, you know, how does it get paid for, you know, hopefully through the application fees and there's some details there that no one has really talked about yet, but that was one option that could potentially work.
We already have an application fee for a building permit based on square footage of the structure.
Yeah. I thought it was a flat $15.
About 25.
Or 25. I thought it was a flat fee.
I thought so too, unless they changed it.
Well, I'm probably wrong then, but I might be getting confused with other towns where you have to.
I think, yeah, I think it is a flat fee. But that's something, I mean, that would, if, if you guys are willing to do that, that would be ideal.
Yeah, I mean, it really comes down to, you know, how much effort would be involved to make the time and, you know, what's it going to cost and, you know, some of those things. But again, I've talked preliminarily with Rick about it. I think it's a good idea. We just need to kind of figure out some details and, you know, if this moves forward, we will have that conversation, I'm sure.
Right. Well, speaking of moving forward, I mean, do we want to establish some kind of timeline? Do we, do we want to proceed to planning commission hearings and select board and then town vote?
We don't have to rush it, but that's really our goal.
I mean, is our goal to have it go to a town vote next March, March meeting?
I guess we could make these corrections, edits, submit this draft to the select board and ask them when they would like to try to, what they did as far as the process. And have this new draft, you know, available to the public for a little while.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe a couple of months.
That's been other hearings.
Yeah, you have a 30 day warning for hearing, planning commission, I think?
I think it's 15, it's 30 for the town plan, it's 15 for this. And ultimately the select board would have to have their own hearing.
Right.
And the select board could under law adopt it themselves or they could opt to send it to town, a town vote, which I'm sure.
I know that it would.
Yeah, that's changed a few times over the years.
Okay, no, I thought it was still, it always had to go to a town vote.
At this point, no, it doesn't. But again, the select board may decide to do that anyway, I don't know. That's their prerogative.
Right. Because if we're looking, so we have July, August, we won't have a meeting, September, I mean, if we're, if our goal is to get it to town vote by March meeting, I mean, we need to start having hearings like in October.
Yes.
And then the select board before their budget meetings, you know, like in December or January.
I think the, the one thing that'll take a little bit of time is just kind of, you know, doing some surgery on this thing here.
Yeah.
Getting it a little shorter, hopefully addressing what you folks want. So maybe you want to review another revised draft at some point, once you're comfortable with it, maybe you start that process.
Okay.
Get it back out to the public and everything like that.
Right. So maybe we shouldn't necessarily be tied into next March, just depends on.
I think it's a good goal.
A goal, yeah.
Maybe we can get, maybe we can get a revised version of this in a month or something to you and then you can go from there.
All right. Sounds good. Is there anything else on this or on the subdivision regs? Anybody have any other?
Not tonight.
Surely?
No.
Nope, okay. All righty, so I guess we'll go onto the affordable housing. We can be pretty brief. Jason, you mentioned you had.
Yeah.
Preliminary.
So Christine in our office, she's on the fire department, so she can't, she can never make Wednesday meetings, so I'm, I'm Christine tonight. So, you know, we wanted to follow up, we were thinking, if we got them right, there were, there were a couple of specific parcels that kind of came out of our little housing suitability study that looked suitable, like it might be worth looking at. And I think there was at least one that you were aware of. And so we started to take a look at them and I have a little thing I'll hand around. We're just trying to understand how we can help. So if there is a property owner who wants to do a housing project, maybe we can help. You know, we have a list of some funding sources that may not help. In every case, most of them are for affordable housing. We'd like to be a resource to, to those people if they want, if they need help with, how do I get started? What are the rules with act 250, what's that? Or I have to worry about those sorts of things. And potentially just doing some basic mapping stuff, so then helping them get started. So I guess I should hand this out. This was just kind of a really rough version of maybe what we could potentially do, you know, and. And the, again, this is just a rough approximation of what maybe we could help folks with if they want to help. And what this happens to be showing is there's an orange down there, some lots that came out of the study, as maybe interesting potential, you know, well suited for housing. And so we wanted to just take a look at constraints and where's their water, where's their sewer, steep slopes, wetlands, those sorts of things. And so in this particular case, you know, it's showing that there is some flood hazards, there's some steep slopes as you get closer to the river, not surprisingly, and you're right near water, you're right along the sewer line. So like it checks some boxes. So just as an example, you know, we can do this sort of a thing if there is interest and just try to help people identify what their possibilities are. So I really just want to throw that out there and just see if there's any specific lots that you want us to look at or if you're aware of anybody that wants some help, happy to do that.
I guess the next step is to kind of drill down and, and look at some properties and then, I guess, figure out how to contact the owners, see if they have any interest.
Yeah, as an example, Chester has a housing commission, which you don't, but that doesn't matter. They're talking with two property owners who have expressed interests and they're just trying to help them understand what's possible. In their case, there's a lot of, what does the zoning allow? You know, in your case, maybe it's just seeing what questions they have, you know. We'd like to be helped there. So again, if there's any interest and you want to explore that further, you know, we'd like to help you out. So if there's any questions, you're welcome to lay them on me now or send me an email or whatever.
So basically you have three lots.
There were not a ton that came out. There were some that seemed better than others. What the, what the study was trying to do was really look at lots that were big enough to have a fairly substantial housing project on them. There are plenty of smaller lots that have some potential and were. There are plenty of smaller lots that have some potential, and we're more than happy to work with any property owners on that stuff too. These were, yeah, they were, they were really just thinking, okay, water and sewer, you know, are they so many acres so that we could have ten, fifteen, twenty units, you know, whatever, the bigger stuff.
So it's the fields next to the Black River Commons?
Right, and, you know, again, this is just for conversation's sake. We've not talked to the property owners, you know, I don't know if they're interested or not, but if they were, this is the kind of thing that we could try to help them with. We can try to connect them to the, to the housing trusts or anybody else if they wanted, you know, somebody like that to take the project on. Any number, any, any sorts of things like that. Again, we're trying to, just trying to be helpful.
Maybe that's what we do. If we identify some properties and then send them a letter saying if they are interested, they can, you know, talk to the housing trust or regional planning commission or come into the.
Yeah, the housing trust is really busy, so maybe it could start with us. But, you know, I think, you know, if it looks like it's a good site, we could make that connection, make a connection.
I mean, I think that's our next step, is to draft up a letter and then send it out and just see, if we don't get any responses, then I guess that's it.
Yeah, so there, you know, there really were only a few bigger parcels like this, but there's plenty of smaller ones.
Right.
And so they could do an accessory dwelling out back, and there's some funding to help and, you know, there's any number of smaller stuff that could happen.
Maybe that would be good, because I mean, it would be good to kind of wrap, wrap this up at some, you know, pretty soon and present it to the select board even.
Yeah, I think, you know, maybe that's where we focus, you know, maybe it's just making sure property owners in, in particular in the villages are, understand what's going on. And there are some funding programs to help them do stuff. So that might be, that might be worth doing.
Okay, I mean, I'd be happy to draft up a letter, I guess, with your guys' input with the different programs, then if we can identify properties that I know we have already on some, but I know Gabe up behind, what was that property up behind the church or?
Owens and Van Shikes.
Okay.
I think it's about forty something acres on the hill there.
Yeah, or that doesn't extend that far, but that would be over here.
Okay. All right.
Keeping the same scale.
All right.
So we're happy to work with you, Tim, on that, happy to use the tool or just otherwise, just do a, a letter to village residents or, you know, again, whatever approach makes sense.
Oh, right.
There's a thing called the V HIP number two, or whatever they're calling it, the Vermont Housing Improvement Program that can help some of these smaller scale projects. So, you know, maybe we can help, you know, connect people to the funding letter.
That would be great. Okay. Okay.
So that was going to be my question is, is, if somebody's looking at their lot and they're saying, hey, I have space, you know, I could put another house in. Is there money that could help them, you know, to, you know, because we just need housing stock, right? We just don't have enough. And so, yes, it'd be great to build a ten unit something someplace or, you know, twenty units or, right? Like, it'd be great to build that, but we just need houses.
And so, you know, there are some funding programs, you know, most of the funding programs are for some level of affordable housing. And so, you know, there are some stipulations to them, you know. This one I'm talking about, Housing Improvement Program, you can get, I think it's up to fifty thousand dollars a unit. You know, it doesn't pay for you all day, but it helps a lot.
But, but it might tip somebody into a, oh, let me, that's what I need in order to make this happen.
It might help them make it happen. And, you know, for, if the, for that particular program, for the first five years, they'd have to, they'd have to rent it out to a, you know, a qualifying low-income person. But after that, whatever.
Okay, well, so that, that might be, that might, you know, so I'm thinking that a letter would say, hey, we noticed you have some space, here's some programs, we'd be happy to work with you if you're interested.
And even putting something on the town website too, if anyone is interested.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, it'd be great to see something happen and help somebody out and making it.
Yeah, sure. Okay, is anything else on affordable housing? I just, Jason, on our enhanced energy plan, is there anything we need to be doing? I know it goes to.
Yeah, we need to do our piece, I think, right? So that got adopted, right?
It got adopted.
And so we need to do our regional review of it, and I forgot about that.
Okay.
So we've got to do that.
All right. Good. And I know, I don't know, can you, there, there needs to be like some basic edits. You know, some of the boxes are kind of weird.
Yeah.
Is that, because I couldn't.
I do that, yeah.
Okay, just kind of clean it up.
Do you want to just send me the last?
I will.
File and then we can clean it up and then?
That would be great.
Piece. So what I'm talking about is, now that it's adopted locally, we're supposed to look at it and basically we have a hearing at the regional level and we say, yeah, meets all the requirements, hopefully. And that makes you then eligible for that due consideration or piece under the PUC.
Okay.
So we give you that additional weight for the review process.
Great, all right, I'll get that to you tomorrow. Okay, item six, discuss future status of Zoom meetings. I think we should keep them, but we just have to get a Zoom account, but I have a personal one we can use. How does everybody feel that keep Zoom?
It's helpful for me tonight.
Yeah, you know, it could be helpful for all of us at some point, so.
Especially, yeah, there is Senate Bill fifty-five, you should be aware of. We're going to be learning more about that any day now, you know, P L C T and others are starting to write up what that means. They changed the open meeting law and there is a, there are some changes in there that would suggest you need to keep Zoom, but there are, there's a little bit of wiggle room whether the planning commission is, needs to or not, but suffice it to say, it's a good thing to keep.
Yes.
We'll give you more details on the law if you, if you want that.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, review correspondence. I got something for a subdivision adjustment line on Prior Road from Act two fifty. There's no plans or anything. I think it's like a boundary adjustment. But I'll forward that. I doubt, there's no action on our point. I think it was just C C to us. I mean, if there is, we'll, we'll find out.
I wonder. No idea what that's about.
Okay.
Is that the one with the three lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got that too.
Okay.
Haven't really looked at it in any detail.
No, I haven't either. Okay, old business, new business on Depot Street and the enforcement letter, they have complied.
Good.
We're gonna, Rick and I are gonna go next week and look at it. So hopefully we.
That's nice.
Yeah, it is good.
That they did.
Yeah, yeah, very appreciative. Okay, does anybody have any other business?
The next time, nothing against you, Jason, next time you do a presentation with a whole bunch of people, it's very hard on a laptop when you put up all this wording. Nobody could see it, you know, so it's better, you know, it's better to like to have, if you're going to put it up, like, just put the bullets that you're going to talk to. Because if they were pages up there, you lost people right away because you couldn't see it, you know.
Okay.
I mean, I was there. You couldn't see it. I know the people around there could. It just makes it easier for people and for the presenter, I think.
Sure.
You know, so just.
Okay.
So.
No, that's, no. Point taken. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
One second.
Okay, Shirley, second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.